Four dollars? When it died, I'd go buy it back. Fix it, drive it again, so it's four hundred dollars.
The method today, we come up with some figures and then they're sent in or do we have to have it pretty well factued?
I need to publish it this time. Finalize it, our first meeting in September. So if you wanna look at it again and come back later this week or next week, we still have time to publish it before the September meeting. But it does need to be published twice. The budget needs to be published once, notice of the review of the budget for approval needs to be published twice.
Need to hear what the helicopters are all about today. I was cutting and Pam was telling me they were waiting to bail on those helicopters blown over.
New ones.
There's several of them.
Yep. Really?
I didn't know it, but...
Great plan maybe, or figuring that?
No idea.
Really, there wasn't a whole lot of added extra other than in the highway department, was there?
So they didn't go up with any weight, so I remember what we had, two fifty and thirty for fuel and that's two eighty. Makes three fifty for the building, this is new expense. That'd be three thirty.
To make the professional fees for the duty call.
Yeah, professional fees would be around forty-five thousand. Thirty-seven five. What did they request last year though for machinery though? Remember?
Well, we're going up almost three hundred on that. Each equipment.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mowers and stuff.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out how much we were. Three seventy-five over.
See, what did they?
Over last year.
My goodness, that's not... Did they, in nineteen, that isn't what they asked for, that's what they paid right now, just right here. Maybe. I can't... Thank you. Huh?
Weird.
Oh.
Well, we're...
Oh, you dipped it over. You're welcome. I didn't see that part.
So we're forty-three.
Oh yeah, here it is. Four forty-three for...
Let's take the thousands off for gravel.
Because we wouldn't have to do the fifty thousand for the...
The building?
Building.
Yep, that digs pretty down, four hundred thousand puts it right back where it was last year.
Yep.
Seventy-five. You take fifty off.
If we have to, I guess that'd be more than likely good.
What's he thinking about, four fifteen difference more this year?
Right, that was with the road grader. Probably. And that pulverizer thing. And gravels in there last year.
Yeah, that was, uh, yeah, that was, everything else was washed except for the fifty for the, for the building and forty-five for...
Thing that made a big difference was when the fuel prices went down a little bit, I remember how that was huge. First bet on the board. Even our prices were like three dollars a gallon.
Yeah, it was forty-five for professional, so fifty thousand on the building. And then three twenty-five.
We could cut out the professional services and just pay that and continue the zeros.
Then the less of the...
So we did the last one, did it. Right, I think that's what I would do, line it set off, because... But we'll be able to see, once you send to the state, they send it back and they tell us whether we match or not with what's coming in, right? Is that kinda what, how that happens?
We send it to the state and they tell us if we are, um, if our tax request is within levy limits. They, they look over the budget and their main concern is our tax request, if it's... Because we can only increase our request by growth plus CPI.
Right.
We are holding the CPI, so we only have growth, so we put that in. And then the, the rest of it, we just have to either use our cash applied or figure estimate what our revenue is from other sources other than taxes. So basically what they look at is if your tax request within the limits and if your tax levies within the limits.
Get some cash on hand, okay.
That's the money that the cash is still left in the accounts that rolls over, is the cash applied from, what was there, leftover from last year?
That and your, any extra money you have in your account.
On the sign.
Yeah.
It's what you had to take to make the budget fit.
Do you know what that's at? How it just went?
Um, I did, we unassigned before the June and March and then medium for September. And I think it was right at, well, over five hundred thousand that we had unassigned, I have to go look and see to be sure, but I believe that's what it was, so...
And that can only be forty percent of your total budget?
Yeah, and I think right now it was like sixteen percent.
One-six.
One-six, yes, sixteen.
And we haven't budgeted for the tuck pointing, is that what they call it, tuck pointing? The droughting of the ground?
Oh, yeah.
And that's coming out of the cash applied?
Yeah. Well, you have assigned money for that.
Okay, yeah.
That's set aside that you can use, if that doesn't figure into your assigned, your loose money, yes. You can have any amount of money as long as it's assigned to a purpose, but undesigned, you don't assign money, it can only be forty percent.
Yeah.
Thousand dollars.
If we reduce this by... What, two hundred thousand?
If you guys want to look at it and think about it, we can make it work for another day, if you wanna come back another day.
Not really, not really.
I understand.
I guess what I, what I wrote down on it here is the, minus the track hoe. I think you guys can use one, rent one a couple times, or rent one and see if that's...
What works for us or does.
Right, so that still leaves two hundred thousand dollars for major equipment, which would be mowers, trucks, pickups, whatever he, they feel like they need to use or get.
Do we wanna, what do we wanna look at, giving a raise there?
Well, Carla was at three thirty, was that, including the track hoe?
Mm-hmm.
That was the track hoe.
Well, no, it was one thirty, one thirty was.
The tackle was one thirty.
Plus the trucks and all.
Yep.
Yeah, the trucks and two pickups and two mowers.
Right, yep, I just minus the track, I mean, we can do more or whatever. Um, I minus the building improvement, I think we'd...
That's right, dude.
That's fifty, but I think you'd be able to use contingency or something if there was something that I needed to.
Well, we need to do something out there.
Right, but I don't think I passed fifty thousand, I wouldn't think.
Unless we got it insured really well, the wind blows it over.
Right. Right, yeah, that's...
Hmm, we probably couldn't get enough out of it, yeah.
I wouldn't think, maybe...
What was the other two things that he had to ask besides the mowers and the trucks and the backhoe, because there must have been more, right?
Mowers, trucks, pickups.
Okay, yeah. Some day one of them.
Twenty.
Yeah, you're right, but how much was it for the pickups, do you remember?
I don't remember that.
I can't remember either.
It's whatever the difference was, like he had forty thousand a piece on trucks, hundred and thirty thousand from the backhoe. What else do you have on that wish list? The mowers, I don't remember what they were.
Twenty-five?
A piece?
Yep.
So that's fifty thousand for mowers.
Well, the pickups fifty.
I, I think they were maybe twenty-five a piece or something.
Yeah, twenty-five a piece, yeah, fifty.
Yep, fifty, fifty. Hundred and thirties, two thirty of them. Trucks.
What'd you come up with, Gary? Well, I, I just suggested that we cut it back to maybe a hundred and fifty. The, the major equipment, okay. What do you guys think? So you gotta take... So that'd be, I'd be a hundred and eighty off, right?
Okay.
So get the track hoe off, that's a hundred and thirty.
Right, and the ice field left open for trucks, okay?
That'd leave two, probably like seventy.
Forty-one.
Because who knows, well, trucks might be a little more expensive, a little less, all kind of depends if you... Guy needs to make sure he gets the one that's gonna last and not trucks that haven't been lasting very long.
I think that's what it should be about, in there somewhere.
One fifty?
Yeah. To get your cash applied down somewhere where you're at forty percent. We should get out Carla, punch it in, see what we, how close we come.
And then I minus the two fifty for gravel, the fifty thousand for royalties, guy doesn't need that, it's three hundred. So drop it at one, two. Gets it down pretty close to what it was last year.
What'd you drop, the gravel?
Yeah, the two fifty.
To not do any crushing?
Right.
Well, that pushes on label. You're not, you're not doing any gravel?
Uh, the crushing?
Yeah.
No, that's just what I, I just was looking to see what...
Oh, if we didn't.
Because he acted like he didn't need it right now.
Well... But they never had any last year at all. I mean, we're skipping around last year for gravel. And if we skip a whole year on it...
I guess I'd rather we cut the other two, three things and keep the gravel crushing, I guess.
Cut one of the trucks, one of the pickups or something like that.
Right.
Get by with what we've got on that.
It's three hundred thousand.
How much, we should take an inventory of how much gravel we have right now on hand. He just did, he just did twenty on Mickey's?
Mm-hmm.
And twenty on...
Billy's.
On Billy's.
Ramses.
And there was about twenty on, left at Mickey's? Before he, something like that?
I don't remember how much was left. And Ramsey's got twenty.
Okay, that's, that's, uh, eighty thousand. Do we have any left north?
At Ramsey's, didn't, wasn't he gonna replace some too or help that girl?
Supposed to.
We had a pile and, you know. Chill, remember any of that?
I suppose I just... Is there anything left up at Newhouse's? It's all gone.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
That's eighty thousand then. What is it, a thou, twelve hundred a mile?
Three inches, but... Sixty-six miles?
Sixty-six?
It's pretty close to the fifteen hundred, I'd bet. Fifty-three? Fifty.
Somewhere between there. Somewhere between fifty-three and sixty-six, somewhere in there about. How many miles we could do with what we got?
They wouldn't probably haul any.
With eight hundred miles of road.
Maybe not all gravel, eight hundred miles.
No, but, yeah, okay, six hundred mile. Even five hundred miles of those.
No, I'm fine with leaving gravel on there.
Ten percent a year.
I was trying to think back down where it was, zero and...
The thing too is how much can you get gravelled in a year too?
And those are all things that we added, they added.
Except for the trucks and pickups and stuff.
Right, yeah, that's the only thing I've just done, but they did. Maybe. They are open haul. Maybe.
If we did it, what you suggest about no gravel and we do send that to the state and order closer to everything, can you add anything back again when it comes back to us?
I thought you could, I thought you'd adjust it after it comes back, because we'd had to cut things after it come back, didn't we? Maybe not.
You can, you can change it at the meeting where you approve your budget, you can add or subtract whatever. But once it's sent into the state, I think it's pretty much set, because that...
What if you don't, what if you're not ready?
Not the preliminary though, or the...
No.
Your provisionally you can change.
Provision, right, yeah, when it comes back.
You don't change, you don't send that to the state, you send it to the state after you have approved your budget, do you?
So what happens if they say you gotta change some?
Well, then I suppose you would have to go back and, and, uh... Make changes, it's, like I say, the, the thing they're looking at is...
So you're not overtaxing?
Yeah.
Have we ever sent one in where we've had to adjust it down, you remember?
Not, not since I...
I don't remember, I don't remember.
I don't remember about before, but I remember not, since I was here, I know you talked about one year you were late getting it sent in.
December?
Yeah, I think that was before I was here too, but...
So, well, kind of looking through it too though, outside of the gravel, I don't know how we choke it down. Well, like I say, choke, take off that for the excavator. Take that for truck and a pickup, so there's a couple hundred thousand. You're not gonna need trucks and trucks if you don't have any gravel at all. So if we do take the vehicles down, how far off were you imagining you were then? An excavator, you won't take that, that's not a whole time. So what'd you figure for the excavator, a hundred and twenty?
Hundred and thirty.
One thirty? And if you take off...
You may be able to buy those trucks for less than fifty a piece too.
Yeah, it's, I mean...
So if you take on...
You may be able to...
Another seventy, you'd be down to two.
One thirty?
One thirty.
Got one thirty on equipment and then...
What are you gonna...
Leave gravel and the royalties?
I think you could pay the fifty thousand dollars to Rudy out of contingency or something instead of putting it in a separate budget. I don't know why you couldn't, that's what we did last time, when we hired him then. You know what I'm saying, he wouldn't...
I just hate to see us run out of gravel, last, last year we didn't make any and we were out, I mean, we were begging tomorrow and trying to get enough to get us by.
Yep.
I remember the same feeling.
I think so too. What was he thinking about crushing back up the... Decker?
That's gone, isn't it?
So I understood.
Things.
Back up the, for Andy's.
Randy? No problem, I was about to.
How mu, oh, he just has, he just said twenty at Billy's, you said, okay. Eighty. That'd put us at a, back up to a hundred and twenty one thousand total, if we did forty thousand next year. Forty, isn't that what we, isn't that what we have in there, it's forty thousand dollars worth, because that's, it's about five dollars. Isn't that Steve?
No, it's four something for four, four something. With your royalty, it comes up to about five or over five. Smoothly four something, the crushing. That one time we got it done for three eighty.
That's a hundred and eighty thousand, forty thousand, done.
Luke, you can probably get it done for two and a half.
Hundred and eighty, so you could, you could get by a little cheaper than what we, not much so, it'd still be two thirty by the time you pay your royalties. Wouldn't save too much. So it's gonna be close to what?
We have royalties separate, don't we?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it was fifty.
Yeah. We, it would be, you'd be under, you'd be, you'd be, uh, seventy thousand dollars under what we budgeted for.
Not much.
We, we budgeted about three hundred thousand total, didn't we? Two fifty for the crushing, fifty for the royalties?
Yeah.
You could come in at two thirty if you did forty thousand.
Yeah, two thirty. Yeah, it'd be less, be around, close to that. Depends how much stripping they gotta do. If they're giving.
And then just go with one truck and...
Yeah, you could save...
Two mowers? He needs mowers, I think they said that last year, that they need mowers pretty bad.
Yeah, leave the mowers, but drop the truck off.
Truck, another forty.
Truck and a pickup.
You could save seventy-five. Yeah, we did forty, so he's...
So it was at one seventy-five, right?
So you'd save yourself something.
Which is fine, yeah, it's all good.
That was long.
So maybe, maybe budget...
Just the cash applied is four hundred thousand dollars more than what it was last year, that's what I was trying to cut out, about four hundred thousand to get the cash applied.
No, nothing to get there on, a year of your crushing gravel. That's always been... Our budget's always been high those years.
Right, and then this year with all the stuff going on, I thought maybe probably better to keep a little more cash available, not knowing what we might need to, spending on the...
Enough for a bus, I think.
Right, for several hundred people maybe.
Come in for me?
Oh, where are you going?
So do we have to plug that in?
Yeah, I think so, so you see what it looks like?
What's the number to changing? I was gonna think, I was gonna...
Let's put the major equipment down to a hundred and fifty. Eliminate the fifty thousand for professional, hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the building, right?
You're asking this one?
So that's...
You're gonna eliminate Rudy?
Yeah. Paid out of contingency instead or something. I don't know if you can do that.
I think we're supposed to be...
You're not supposed to. You're not supposed to be budgeting for the county for...
There's several, there's several. Contingency's supposed to save you, I think we could take it out of, I mean, you got, you got a pretty good budget for fuel and you got a pretty good budget for supplies. You know?
I don't know, what did we pay in that other year, was it that much?
Yeah, it was like sixty, sixty-four thousand seven hundred and one, I'll bet, or right around that. I think it was sixty, I, the number I remember is sixty-four thousand.
But I don't think they'll ever haul that much in a year again, you know? I mean, he, that's all they did that summer was haul gravel that year.
So, we didn't pay it out of contingency, because we paid it out of the...
Which way?
Professional, professional services. That's where it was back in eighteen or nineteen, you mean?
Seventeen.
So if we come out of professional...
No, that's your, that's your, your payment for your blades.
You might have paid the last of his deal out of your contingency, Gary. The last bill or something, I don't remember.
Your wife doesn't do your checkbook, does she?
I do it all. Unfortunately.
But you could, you could ship that, I mean, you don't need, it could be half that or thirty thousand or whatever.
Yeah.
If that one guy does, he can move stuff around, it's just a... It really doesn't say how much was actually in that, that year, it just says how much we spent.
That's what we spent on hauling, right?
I don't remember how.
See ya, thanks Steph.
We, we, we took money, we didn't budget that though, we took money out of something, I, I know we didn't budget that the year ahead. I'm pretty sure.
For Rudy, no.
For Rudy, yeah, we took it out of some of...
Supplemented it.
Yeah, somehow.
Right.
I know we didn't budget it.
Well, this, again, if you're having some type of a, like washouts like we had this year, then there's an emergency and you can use the contingency, right?
Right.
And because it's not a forcing.
Right, and you can supplement too, it's down to it.
Yeah, because you don't even know if you can get it.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right, you don't know. That's why we gotta supplement everything to scout the building.
He was good about, he was as cheap as we could do it. So, or maybe cheaper, I don't know. Yeah, it was a good deal, I think. He may go up and price up too.
All right, where's your numbers so she can plug this in?
I did a hundred and fifty for, in your suppliers, I was gonna cut the fifty for the building. Fifty for the professional fees.
Okay, so still leaving the royalties fifty? Okay, so still leaving the royalties fifty?
Yeah. We could back, we, if you want to, we could back the crushing back to a hundred and eighty if you only wanted to do a hundred forty thousand ton.
If they're here, you just will have them crush.
Yeah.
If they're, if they're set up, you just will have them do.
Do the whole thing.
I would think.
I don't think we're gonna be needing that much, but not... But other than that, I don't think anybody else's budget, we really, that was the only place we played anything on. Everything else we just went straight across pretty much, so.
That and the library, two thousand dollars.
And we take some out of harvest.
Took twenty-five hundred dollars for apply, but I think for...
The what's one?
Apply, I told you, they don't... Then make your twenty-five hundred.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, because she's already said she got full, full station, she already had it.
You gotta come out of somewhere. I think you can look it out of.
From the library, look at that.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the supplies, that's, yeah.
It's pretty close, gotta be all see what it does. With the insurance raise of fifteen percent, that's kinda hard to hit that, but if anything's gonna go up a little bit.
This year we asked her how come she stood, but it was because she bought all these loads with stamps on it. So we should...
Yeah.
No. You, if, even if you raised the wages a little bit, it would be a lot less.
Could be, but that, that boy, you're really not talking. If you cut it a little bit, you still...
You gotta look for the big one, you're gonna go out of. There's so many of them, you can't do anything about it.
Oh, it's, oh, that's what she was saying, computer updates, that's right, why we like to save the full...
Did you give that, Carla? Carla, did you, did you, did you get what I said?
Stuff like that, that was all covered up on...
You wanna leave the gravel crushing missing?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay, and leave the royalties?
Yeah.
Remove the building and cut the, I don't know, the major equipment back to a hundred and fifty? Was that all?
And no one cut the building?
Professional fees too.
What did you want to put it, take it all out or?
I believe that they, they originally had five in there or something. I'd probably just leave it so we didn't have ways of hauling the gravel, professional fees.
No, leave five in there, all of it.
Fifty or whatever. I mean, if we do get in, if we do haul gravel next year, you'll use every bit of it.
Yeah, I think I'd cut it.
Cause you don't, like he said, you don't know if you're gonna get him. Either, you know what I mean? He may be... But you might be able to get somebody else.
Yeah.
No, but it wouldn't take long to eat six thousand, to help.
But if they're that high, I don't know if you wanna hire them. You know, just look at what we have before, I mean, those guys...
Oh, boy.
Way higher than he was.
Yeah.
Which we would no hire. We still got a couple trucks, don't we?
Yeah, hope so.
And we're still budgeting for one more.
They're to replace though, right?
I would think so. Get rid of the international.
Sure. I love mine.
Nah, it's got a couple straight, got a couple straight trucks too, don't we?
Maybe I can buy a few.
So I mean, if you got the mine and a half of gravel that much.
That's what I need, it's two trucks. I could get Pam the one and I could grab the other one.
I've never driven international, is it that bad? I don't know the amount, but I've never driven it.
We could just cut that out, see where we're at and add a back end, I guess.
Yeah.
Let's go with those and see where we're at. Take the fifty out.
Take that.
Fifty out and, uh... One, oh, what's the other one? Leave one fifty in. Pretty quick.
I think you better leave some, only way you gotta, I know he needs some two mowers for sure. At least one truck. That still, still gives you a little more, I think.
Yeah, well, we're gonna leave one fifty in the equipment. Take the little two fifties out.
Yeah.
Right.
Just see where we go with that.
Yeah, I think that's what he's doing.
See what it comes out.
Leave the gravel crushing missing.
Yeah, yeah.
You got that punched in yet?
I'm sure there's gonna be another opinion here, I'm pretty sure, anybody else?
What do you think, Tom? You think it's all right?
No, let's go try that, see what's...
We'll get it done, we'll send it to you.
Okay.
Or mail it to you or whatever. And then, like I say, next time, when you need to go over the professional budget in September, you can make any changes you want to. We note them in the minutes and then you approve your budget or...
Yeah.
So are we motioning to approve this now then?
No, we, no, she's just gonna make changes, right? Do we have to approve, make a motion?
If you want it published like this, then you need to make a motion and...
Let's wait till we see the numbers.
Okay. So do you need us to come back?
Come back.
That's right, I know.
I, I feel better doing that.
Okay.
Get another look at it.
That'll work. All right.
Do you wanna come back?
Yeah.
See how close we are. At least see how close we're at. I'd feel better about it. I can afford to come up here one more time, I think.
When?
Oh, we got vouchers yet to do too.
What's that?
We got vouchers to do yet too.
But when do you wanna do that? Okay, yeah.
I don't, it don't matter to me, I guess, I... I'm to see what... Fourth? Am I looking at the right month, I can't see that far. Carla, can you let me know if this is a, the actual budget with no money added? This is a fourth, between now and whenever?
Yeah.
Does that match, does that match, uh...
It don't, it don't match me, I'll come back.
Doesn't?
Then that office don't match that office.
And the reason is because...
They all have added money?
Things going on, but I...
She put in a little extra.
She did add a little bit.
Yeah, and we put in a little extra for a fill-in, which you can take out if you want to. And I don't think it was probably...
So what did you have for a fill-in for?
Like today I had Jennifer looking for the phone when we had voters coming in for registration forms. When we had a meeting here today. Carla, they had packs, people coming in for tax, but we didn't take that out.
Right, well, I mean, it's not why we have deputies, is that why we didn't have to? To me, that seems silly, I guess.